We're going to get started with an invocation from Councilman McAtee and then I'll lead the Pledge of Allegiance. But everyone please stand.
All right, I thank you for this opportunity to come together and discuss matters that our citizens and us are concerned about. Give us wisdom as we look forward to what you would have us to do next year is meeting the needs of our citizens, providing a safe place to live, to work, to play, and to retire. Thank you for the blessings that you've given to Oklahoma City in the past, and may we be worthy of those same blessings in the future as we move forward. All of this we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll call the meeting to order and then quickly recess the council meeting and convene as the Finance Committee and introduce the city manager.
Thank you. Before we get started with Bob Teener and Development Services, one thing I want to summarize a little bit as we go forward, as we put the budget together, we put some of it together in January and we have our council workshop in January or February when we talk about our financial trends and sessions. So we've got new data points coming along the way. And so the latest data point would be the June sales tax check that came in last week, and it came in very close to target. And so we now have all 12 months of sales tax for the year, and our sales tax came in within .07 percent of our target. And Doug does a great job with his staff of projections. We follow Russell Evans, but there is a little luck in that, too. And so, but that's really, we've never ever been anywhere close to being that close to the sales tax. So that validates the number. Now, one of the things I want to point out, as you remember, we were projecting a 1.95 percent growth rate. And then on top of that, the Tax Commission changed a year or so through the legislature how they collect, what they retain. And so we get an extra half percent this year. So that was a net tax rate growth of 2.45 percent. 1.95 percent in growth and a half percent because of the changes in the Tax Commission. Not because of the June check, but because of the May check, that came in a little stronger than we had last year. We have not changed our revenue numbers, it's in the budget document, from when we put it together several months ago, which was before we had the May check. So when you take a look at what we've got now for our sales tax collections for all 12 months, and you look forward, our growth rate is 2.35 percent. And that's because we haven't changed our budget numbers, but because the old 14-15 numbers came up a little bit, the differential between the two is a little bit lesser in the growth rate. So that's where we're at. We're at a growth rate projected of 2.35 percent in the next budget year, and when we put it together, it was 2.45 percent. And so I just want to be very clear as we go forward, if you were projected at 2.45 from it, it's about $200,000, is the difference in that kind of money. So I just want to be clear about that as we go forward. The May check was fairly strong. The June check was not real strong, but it was okay. It brought us to closure of the year in just right where we thought we were going to be. Any questions on that before we go further? Okay, now we can go with Development Services and our director, Bob Teener.
Good morning. I'm going to do the presentation for Development Services. The budget, in the budget book, it's C71. We have 201 full-time positions. I'd like to introduce the staff that's present. Rick Wickenkamp's my Assistant Director. He's responsible for this presentation. Carol Reed is a Management Specialist. She's doing our budget for us now, so thanks for that. Julie Bank, you met with Animal Pet of the Quarter, and we'll hopefully see her later in the summer. She's the Superintendent Animal Welfare. David Adcock is the Development Center Manager. J.J. Chambliss is the Manager of Subdivision and Zoning, and Charles Locke is Code Enforcement. I'd like to read our mission statement. Our mission is to provide animal welfare, code enforcement, construction, permitting, and inspections, licensing, and development application review services to the development community and general public so they can receive timely development decisions and live in a clean, safe, and stable city. One thing I'd like to add is I'm really lucky with my division heads. They're all really experts in their field. Most of them have over 30 years of experience. I think Julie started when she was 10, but it really helps me to do my job when the people you have working for you are as good as they are. And I want also Danny Bumpus, you see him every Tuesday. He's the Chief Building Inspector and Code Enforcement. He's going to help with the slideshow here. This is our organizational chart, this is the five lines of business. Admin has four staff members, Animal Welfare, Code Enforcement, Subdivision, Zoning, Development Center. The point I want to make here is each of these divisions has direct contact with our customers every day, and so good customer service to us is very important, and we strive to try, you know, try to meet the needs of the citizens. And you all get calls about Code Enforcement, but they do a very good job of meeting those expectations. This next slide, this was a 2014 citizen survey. We were the sixth priority just after Parks. I just wanted to show you this because I think this shows that our citizens want reasonable enforcement of the codes, and they have that expectation, and we're going to try to meet that. Going to start with Code Enforcement. We do over 116,000 inspections a year. They're responsible for dilapidated structures, unsecured properties, and abandoned buildings. You see that every Tuesday on your agenda. They're also responsible for high grass and weeds, junk and debris, zoning complaints, business license complaints, inoperable vehicles. I'm sure I'm leaving some out, but they have a full-time job. You know, if you've got a complaint, a lot of the time it's coming to Code Enforcement. One thing I'd like to point out at the bottom right here on this slide, we gave notice to the property owner on that inoperable vehicle, and when the inspector went back out to follow up, the guy knocked the brick out of the side of his house and chained his car to the house so we wouldn't take it. Kind of luckily, we were able to meet with him and he resolved it voluntarily, so we didn't have to take the house and the car.
That's a great indication, though, of some of the challenges that Bob and his department have. I mean, you know, when you're dealing with people's personal property, it gets personal.
This next slide is our yard parking citations. As you all know, yard parking in neighborhoods is kind of an early sign of some blight, maybe some decline. And back in 2013, the council approved five additional Code Enforcement officers so we could start a weekend enforcement. What we found out in yard parking is typically the person parks there after 5:00 or on the weekends, and we really didn't have the ability to get to most of those violators. So with that five, additional five inspectors, we've been able to get out on the weekends, and you can see there the numbers have gone up pretty steadily. We're anticipating about over 14,000 citations by the end of this year. This slide is just to show you the difference in our proactive inspections and our reactive inspections. Reactive inspections are inspections that we receive from the Action Center or the Manager's Office that we have to work. We have, our inspectors have a four-day turnaround to make sure they've worked those inspections. One thing that you need to know, for this nine-month period, we're actually at 56.6 percent of our inspections are proactive. We've all, I've always said that we're really primarily a reactive Code Enforcement, but we're kind of trending to 50-50. You need to notice a proactive there in December, January, February. We had more proactive there because that's the, we don't have a high grass and weed complaint number, so the proactive go up. After this rain in May, it's going to be hard, we're going to have a lot of tall grass and weed complaints. So it'll be interesting to see at the end, excuse me, at the end of this year, where we come out proactive versus reactive. One thing, too, we started our proactive property maintenance program in January, so that's part of the spike there probably in our proactive. This slide, for the year 2014, we averaged about 220 property maintenance inspections a month. When we started our proactive property maintenance program to support our abandoned building program, we increased that number to over 1,200 a month. So we won't be able to sustain that through the summer, but you know, every time we get back through the end of fall and the winter, we'll have opportunities to get those proactive enforcement numbers up. And I just want to point this slide out. This is the number of property owner abatement for proact, for property maintenance. So you can see we had a spike there in March. It more than doubled in February, and we feel that this is an indication that the neighborhoods are kind of getting the message that we're serious about our proactive property maintenance program. And the more we can get abated by the owner, the quicker the neighborhood can see the recovery. You know, we don't really want to go through the court system. If we can get the property owner to fix it, it's a lot better for us and them.
Bob, does that include paint and condition of wood and all those sorts of things, which is?
Yeah. It would be, yeah, there's a list in the ordinance of the different types of things, but paint, roofing, guttering, all those things we look at. And you know, there are opportunities through the Planning Department to get help with, you know, if you need help to get your, to improve your property. And we, you know, this is a deal where we give you notice, but we're going to work with you. As long as you're showing, you know, progress on improvement, you know, we'll work with you. We're not going to write a citation the first time if you're showing some interest.
And the difference in this property maintenance focus versus previous Code Enforcement is?
It's proactive.
Okay.
So in the past, these, in the year 14, those were all reactive complaints, meaning unless we picked one up on one of our 29 neighborhoods, we do proactive enforcement. So the difference there is our inspectors in the field in every neighborhood, you know, if they see something, they can write it up and work it. So this is, you know, like I said, I think this is an indication that the neighbor, that the property owners are kind of getting the message here. I want to talk about Development Center. This is our largest division. They do over 111,000 inspections a year. We have construction inspections, plan review, and then our permitting and licensing. You can see we issued over 51,000 permits last year. We work, this division, you know, may has, maybe has the most contact with developers, but we also have a lot of contact with just the average citizen coming in. And so we've tried several things to try to make it easier for you to get a permit. You can get a garage sale permit online. You can do a lot of your stuff over the phone now. So we work hard to make that as easy for them as possible. This is our construction inspection diagram, or graph. I know Councilman Greenwell remembers this, but back in FY '12 and '13, we had a hard time getting our inspections done. We were doing it three, four, five days out. The auditor did an audit of our operation and compared us with nine peer cities. And what we found out through that audit is that the majority of those cities were doing it in one day. And you know, we were having a hard time getting it done in three days, four days. I got a lot of calls back then. And you know, what we did, what we decided to do, we looked at the audit, and I, you know, I didn't believe it at first, but then once we started calling those peer cities and talking to them about how they did it, you know, the, you know, a light kind of went on, I think. And so we met with our inspectors, called them in, we went over every audit recommendation that came from the auditor's office. Laura Johnson from the Manager's Office was there to show support, and we just walked them through it and said, you know, if these guys can do it, we know you can do it. And it was really just a cultural shift that we had to go through. And seeing the numbers there, it really, once we started on the program, it went pretty well. We've got 91 percent inspection, or inspections in one day, 91 percent of the time, that was through March. Our April numbers are 92 percent of the time. And you know, one of the things I remember is when, in 2012, I would get complaints where a home builder had two houses side by side, and he'd call one inspection in the morning and one in the afternoon, and our guy'd go out there and he wouldn't do the other inspection. And he says, "It's not on my list, I can't do it." And so that's one of the things that we fixed, you know, because when somebody calls you with that complaint, it's hard to explain. You just can't say, "I don't know why you didn't do it." So that's one of the things. And later I'm going to talk about some of the other things, but you know, getting our inspectors out in the field faster, you know, having accurate counts of our inspections so they know what they're needed to do and know what their expectation is. So I'm pretty proud of this.
We need to highlight this a little bit because it's more than that. First of all, Bob and Rick, they can get a lot of credit for making these changes, but it's more than just focus. Focus was a big part of it. But you, there's a couple personnel changes. We added some personnel to the process. We brought technology into it. We have GPSs on all the vehicles now. We have, we've automated the process, and we've got, you know, they're all electronic processing on other permits that have been down the line, and the culture change that's been out there, and processing changes that you've done internally. There's a lot of changes that have happened on it, but it's significant. Bob and Rick sent me a report. I get it about every Monday at 4:30, and it tells me each discipline and the weight and how many, how many, how long it takes to get them done, how many are backlog in each discipline. And yesterday, it was same-day service on electrical plumbing, mechanical, and building. And I will say that's the way it is probably three out of four weeks, and the other week there's, one of them has a one-day delay on it. So it's really gratifying to see that there's changes they've made. It's really, I think our building communities is pleased with the change in results.
Yeah, and one thing I want to add there is we did, one of the changes we made, in those trades, you come up as an inspector one, a two, then you become the chief, and then we have a superintendent over all the chiefs, and then Development Center Manager. The last time our superintendent over the chiefs changed, we hired a manager as opposed to a code expert, and that really helped us. So the next slide, this is building permit revenue. Over the last two or three years, our revenue has increased, and through April of last, of this year, we're over a million dollars ahead of our revenue from last year. And the reason I wanted to show you this is that the number of permits issued is actually down. And so you can't really just look at your permit numbers, you've got to look at this combined. And the reason it's down is that last year we had a peak in storm shelter permits. And those permits, a garage sale, a garage shelter is $50, and a boat ground safe room is $73. So when you take out a bunch of those, you're really not generating a lot of revenue. So you look at, if you were just to look at the permit numbers, you'd be kind of worried, but if you, you know, go through it, you see that we have a couple of projects, Hobby Lobby, they did a big warehouse, the GE Research Center, we have another large food distribution center. You know, those things generate more revenue, you know, a lot of inspections. And we anticipate, you know, next year, we have 499 coming in, we have OG Netaur, or their center, and those two residential towers. So things are looking good, I think, for the permits for the next year as well. I'm going to talk about animal welfare. We have over 8,000 visitors a month here. We handle about 27,000 live animals a year. The staff there works really hard to get animals out of the shelter alive. I mean, that's really our goal here. And we can't do that without help from our partners. We have partnerships with ASPCA, with Central OK Humane, is probably our biggest partner. We have over 100 foster families rescue groups that allow us to get animals out of the shelter so we don't have to process them. And our volunteer group is very important for the staff that we have. We have people come in that do laundry, they walk dogs, they do the things that would take time away from our staff if they weren't available to us. So it's pretty exciting, you know, we're going to continue to work on it. This next slide, this shows our live release rate. This and the construction inspection graphs are, this is up to me, I just put these two up, but this one shows an increase of over 10 percent from last year, 4 percent above of our projected target. And you know, the key here is, the way to do this is we've got to, we've got to get, we can't keep taking 27,000 animals a year. We've got to reduce that number to help us here. Julie's, you know, an expert in the field here, and she's identified some things, and you know, things look pretty good, but if we can't get our numbers down coming in, it's going to be hard to keep our numbers going.
And I should highlight, I mean, Julie's been here since the first of the year, Julie?
Yeah, six months.
And done a great job. We've made some positive trends over the need, over the years that have really reflected, but we need to continue to follow that trend. And by the way, I forgot to mention David Adcock earlier, and I mentioned Rick and and Bob, but David Adcock's over Development Services, and he really did yeoman's job on getting those things changed over there. So I really appreciate it all, Lord, that David's done.
We currently have a capital improvements project at the shelter, so I wanted to show you this. On the left, those are the existing kennels. They were put in about 2000. What I've learned over the last five years is that kennels last about 15 years, and they start to break down because you have to clean them with, well, at the time, we were using bleach and soap, and you know, it just breaks down the wire, and it's, and as you can tell, there's just a concrete floor. So the new kennels, we've got one room that's almost complete. The difference here is we've got a, we've got our flooring sealed now, which helps with spread of disease. We have a glass door on the front of the kennels. What we learned is that, you know, when a citizen would come in, or even one of our staff members, you pet that dog there, and the white dog, and then you go to the next one and you pet that dog, and that's just a way to spread disease between these dogs. We didn't really, you know, I didn't think about it, but. So now we've got the glass doors, that's going to help eliminate that. You know, parvo, those things live in crevices in the floor, and so with this sealed flooring, with new cleaning techniques, we should be able to help reduce the amount of disease in the shelter. We're hoping this project is completed by winter of this year, for the first of the year. So the thing I'd say is we, you can maybe notice the lighting, we've got a project to put in energy-efficient lighting throughout the shelter. The light on the left is just those fluorescent bulbs, and the one on the right is that new energy-efficient lighting. We also have a project to expand our parking lot. You know, we're hoping for some help from Public Works on this, but it'd give us a drive out to Grand Boulevard. If you're on a Saturday, it's sometimes it's hard to find a parking spot. That's how many people that we get on the weekends. So we're looking forward to that, completion of that. Subdivision and zoning, this is my smallest division. They have nine employees. They do over 500 zoning applications a year. This is really the staff that, you know, if somebody comes into the city and wants to do new residential development or a new business, they come to these guys first to check the zoning and work on the plating, and they're really kind of upfront force in meeting with developers. The other thing, they provide support to Board of Adjustment, Planning Commission. So I mean, they do a lot for just having nine staff people. The other thing I want to point out here is that there's, they assign over 3,000 addresses a year, and that's an indication that the city continues to grow because these are new addresses, and it's important for the 911 system to have adequate addressing.
Bob, if I could just comment, that is part of your staff that really are expert. You know, their interface with customers, individuals trying to start new businesses. I mean, I'm always amazed at how quick they are at being able to answer questions and help provide really good information for folks that are trying to do something innovative, and they're creative. I really appreciate all the help they've offered.
I appreciate that. They got a lot of that from me, but that's, that's really where I kind of cut my teeth was in zoning and subdivision. But they are really good. And you know, the ordinance isn't definite on everything. You've got to, you know, you need to, people need to be able to interpret it, and they're familiar with the codes, and that really helps. You know, you see the staff reports every week at council. So here's our budget summary. Our operating budget's $18,651,000. This is a 2.9 percent increase over last year. Really the only budget change, we deleted a customer, senior customer service rep, a vacant position that was assigned to the vacant and abandoned building program. That position was going to be a cashier to handle the registration fees, but since we've changed our focus in that program, we didn't need that position anymore. And the last slide here, I just want to talk briefly about what we're going to do and what you're going to see in the next year. We're going to continue to improve our services in Development Center. I talked about construction inspections, but our plan review, we have a goal of getting our first review done in 10 days, and they've been consistently at seven, eight days now. Our permitting and licensing, which is an important part for people, you know, like me getting my garage, I mean, my storm shelter permit, you know, we work hard to make that work well, and we're going to continue to improve that. And one thing I will add about construction inspections, the first part of this year, we changed, made a change to their procedures. They no longer come into 420 into the office in the morning. They report directly to the parking garage, and their inspections are loaded on their iPad or their laptop, and they dispatch from the parking garage by 8:15. So that actually saved us, or picked up one or two additional inspections a day, and it's been pretty successful. You know, as long as our technology holds out and we can get those inspections to them, it works pretty well. Full implementation of the abandoned building program, we're looking forward to that, to see what the impacts are, you know, how our neighborhoods react to that. I've talked about the continued improvement in live release rate at the animal shelter. And then animal control. When Julie started, that was one of the things I met with her about. It appeared to me at the time that we had some trouble getting, doing proper response and making and making sure it was important to our field guys that they needed to respond to calls at a, you know, at a reasonable time. Now that, I didn't have data to back that up, but that's just the feel I got from the calls. And so Julie's been working on that and really I haven't, I should knock on wood, but, you know, the last six months, those numbers, those calls have kind of gone away. We still get a few, but I think they're working hard to address that concern, or at least it was my concern and some of the citizens' concerns. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Bob.
Bob, we really appreciate the improvements your departments have made.
Thank you.
And love to see it quantified there. We've come so far in so many of these areas, I know our citizens appreciate it.
Appreciate that.
You bet. Thanks.
Next up is Parks and Recs. Doug?
Thank you, sir.
Before we start, I think Mayor made a comment that I want to follow up on. We do count a lot of things with our leading for results, performance measurable team. It's, you know, when we go through, when I go through them monthly, it's a hundred pages, a hundred and two pages or something like that of data that we go through each month to see what the trends are and where we're going. And it really helps us identify what we're doing well and where we're not doing well and we need to add some focus. Focus isn't always dollars, sometimes it's just focus, but we count a lot and I think that really does serve us well.
Thank you. Of course, I think it was Spencer Tracy that said never follow children or dogs. Thanks, Bob. Parks and Recreation, I just want to start off by thanking my staff for helping me prepare this. Jennifer Clintock here and Mike Smith, my business manager, they had to endure about a hundred and twenty-seven mind changes through this presentation, so I wanted to thank them. And I also want to recognize Melinda McMillan, who is doing double duty. She is the division manager over Natural Resources, but she is also currently the acting assistant director for the department. And of course, Chris Hamilton, you all know, is our recreation manager, who is busy making sure that the summer programming that we're offering is doing well. And of course, Catherine Wade over Parks and Grounds and then Terry Ash, our principal planner for the department. My clicker is not here, so Jennifer, you'll have to go forward. The mission of the Parks and Recreation Department is to provide outstanding parks and grounds, recreational opportunities and cultural services so that the residents and visitors can enjoy an enhanced quality of life. For the first time, the Parks and Recreation Department is part of the top priorities that you, the city council, have deemed important for us to pursue and we are the new council priority for health and wellness. And again, this fits into what everything that we do on a daily basis is trying to provide for quality, healthy experiences, whether you're in one of our programs or just enjoying the parks from a mental health perspective. Our trends, leading for results, obviously the importance of where we fit into the quality of life spectrum. The graph up here is from the Trust from Public Lands. They grade the top one hundred cities in the nation as it relates to parks and recreational opportunities. One of the standards that they look at is accessible, walking accessibility. Every city in the country is striving to try to have green space within a half mile of every resident in their cities. Obviously, we have a little bit of a challenge with having six hundred and twenty-one square miles being so spread out, but I think in the hierarchy of things, we're not doing too bad. I mean, San Antonio's even worse than we are, but we are trying to improve that particular thing in our planning going forward, working with Aubrey and the planning department as well as working with developers and things along those lines. We're going to strive to be better at that as well. Then, of course, another one of our leading for example, our results is, you know, improved facilities and the quality of those facilities. You know, that maintenance of local parks, we're at seventy-one percent, you know, happy campers with our maintenance. But if you were to have been in my office about two weeks ago when the calls were coming in, wondering what the heck was wrong with us, why are we mowing parks in the rain and creating a mess, I think that probably would have slid back towards the ten percent approval rating. But we've taken corrective action. Fortunately, we're drying out quite quickly, we can get back into our mowing. But we do have a pretty good success rate as it relates to the quality of our maintenance and things along those lines. We just have to, like Bob, have to kind of look at our culture and reevaluate what is important to us as it relates to getting the job done. Operational efficiencies, again, the study was done. We realized that regional parks, we can offer multitudes of activities in regional parks that we might not be able to fit into small neighborhood parks. So from an efficiency perspective, if we can offer picnic shelters, we can offer diverse recreational elements such as skate parks and athletic fields, walking paths and places to, for people to gather and just enjoy each other's company. It gives us a more efficient rating to, from that perspective. But again, neighborhood parks is what makes great cities great and we need, we can't lose sight of that. But obviously, large regional parks help us obtain a better score. The park that's depicted here is obviously Route sixty-six and it has our largest playground, it has the observation tower out there, which is just an awesome activity, just to be able to get up over the water. We've got a small amphitheater, the skate park, obviously, and then three ponds for close to home type fishing. Capital improvements, again, we're always striving to make the parks more enjoyable and visitor worthy. This is a picture of Bicentennial Park being heavily used. We'd like to see every single one of our parks get this type of activity and that's what we're striving towards in these capital improvements that you allow us to do on an annual basis. And of course, the citizens have allowed us to do through their, the GL bonds that they've approved over the years. Again, our strategic results are maximizing the number of citizens using our parks and we'd like to make sure that you, as council people, when you go out to neighborhood associations, say, when was the last time you used a park? The citizens will say yesterday and not two years ago or when I was a kid. So we want to make sure that they're attractive and they're being used by our citizens because that's what they're there for. This is our current suggested budget, thirty-four million, two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. The largest piece of that, obviously, is grounds management and then the recreation and horticulture, natural resources is tied. But I want to point out that the civic center up there, three and a half million, is a heck of a value for our citizens. The multitude of activities that you can have at the civic center, not just cultural activities, but private activities at that facility is just an awesome situation. The non-operating budget that you see there, that is our partnerships. That's the indoor tennis facility that we're getting ready to go to bid for over in Will Rogers. That's the Sandridge partnership for the new, the creation of the new park there. And obviously, the, for the north side of town, the partnership with Wilderness Matters and the creation of that accessible trail out at Martin Park. Those are the type of things that fit into that non-operating so that we have an opportunity to be able to get that money back out and accomplishing what our partners have set out for us to do. So that's a big piece of what we watch over and we'd like to see that grow and that's what we're working from a partnership perspective. We're trying to find those partners to help that number grow, which then helps the system grow, but not through taxpayer dollars. Administration is made up by our planning and landscape architectures. They've broadened their scope, they're working very closely with the planning department to work with new developers, to try to make sure that we're out in front of development or at least in lockstep with development so that some kind of recreational space is created, whether it's city owned and operated or privately owned and operated. We want to make sure that we're, again, striving towards that half mile. Every citizen has access to some kind of recreational element and it doesn't have to be us, but we want to make sure that we're a player in that, in that game. We can help create those spaces. We can point out to them that long linear spaces can be just as good as rectangles or squares so that they think about those creeks that run through developments, not setting them, the backyards right up next to them, but given space so that it can create greenways and wildlife habitat, runways and things along those lines. Central Business Office, which handles about twenty-four hundred permits a year. It's growing every year that we're in business. We're taking in calls on a daily basis. Ironically, people are calling, trying to book space for the Fourth of July weekend. They don't realize that most of that gets snapped up months and months, if not a year in advance. So again, creating dynamic spaces in all of our parks would then grow the opportunity for people to have their family reunions at more diverse facilities than just Will Rogers or Bicentennial or Wiley Post or things along those lines. And the marketing folks, Jennifer leads our team in trying to sell the products that our team creates through recreation programs or environmental ed programs out at Martin Park. Jennifer is doing a yeoman's job of trying to advertise the diversity by which we have to offer. And of course, our support staff manages the six trusts and committees that we work with on an annual basis. Again, a little bit about the civic center, the box office, the primary activities of the box office, the venues and then facility rentals. Again, our LFRs are there. We want to make sure that people that come to our events, to our facilities have a great time and, you know, we maintain a high level of revenues. But I want to give you a few of our numbers. Total number of tickets sold, we're estimated to reach two hundred and eighty-five thousand tickets sold this year and we're pretty well on track for that. Number of patrons attending performances, we're, last year, we were at three hundred and sixty-six thousand. We're on target to do about three hundred and forty-six thousand this year. Number of private events, again, we're over two hundred private rentals. That's the Hall of Mirrors and other activities within that building. So our folks are using it on a regular basis. We're almost maxed at our capacity, but with the addition of Rose State and the Hutterberg Center out there, we're being able to offer even more cultural activities through the civic center staff. We're excited about all that they offer. Grounds Management, again, parks and outdoor, outdoor athletic facilities, medians and rideaways, got some lake recreational areas. You know those areas better than me. The Oklahoma River is a long park that we do on a regular basis. And of course, we've got thousands and thousands of trees in our parks and our certified arborist is now advising downtown OKC on the streetscape and the issues that might befall the trees that we're planting along there. But we're at five thousand acres. Again, we've got a high success rate. Again, we're going to take a hard look. Our LFRs are being completely reviewed this year and this particular one, you know, a hundred percent of our work orders will be done within two days. Doesn't cut it when it's raining twenty inches. So we've got to figure out how to work through that particular LFR and make more sense of it so that our staff doesn't think they have to mow in the rain, which again, tears up the parks, but it's also tougher on our equipment. So we've got to think through that one when we're working with our experts on redoing or at least revisiting all of our LFRs this year to make sure that we come back to you all with something that makes sense and is really relevant to our citizens. Natural Resources is the canal and our flower beds when this campus is redone and all the cover beds are reestablished here at City Hall. And of course, Bicentennial Park falls under those situations. But you all know that we have millions and millions of visitors visiting the Bricktown and our canal annually. That in itself is a tough gig to make sure that the litter, every nuance of litter gets picked up and the beds stay healthy down through there. And of course, the artwork is kept clean and visually appealing. Regatta Park is under their jurisdiction. And of course, then Will Rogers and the, like in Conservatory and Expo Center and all the bookings that go on there, falls under the Natural Resources Organization. Martin Park Nature Center, again, main hub for our environmental ed programs. Our two naturalists work out of that facility and do an outreach out of there. And of course, our fish hatchery program, again, over five hundred thousand fish were put in our close to home waters and a couple thousand, thanks to the DeLisi's during the trout fishing season at DeLisi Lake was very popular again this year for our fishing public. Recreation and Health and Wellness, again, this is the bread and butter of our organization. This is where the wheels hit the road. If people aren't getting out and using our parks, what good are they? And if we can't create viable programs for our citizens to at least learn how to best utilize their recreational spaces, then we're not doing our job. And Chris Hamilton and his staff have done an excellent job of creating new opportunities for our citizens. In fact, this summer, we're offering an all-day summer program at a few of our locations, very reasonably priced, but the children are taking on field trips to educational based places like the museum and the zoos. We're taking them out to go swimming so that they have an opportunity to do that as well. So again, it's an all-day program, five days a week. It's an alternative to the old standard daycare type of programs and it's a very large leap forward from the old play in the park programs where the kids could come and go and parents did not feel comfortable whether their children were in a productive frame of mind or a non-productive frame of mind. Again, our athletics is in this and our aquatics. Our aquatics program touched the lives, will touch the lives, over a hundred and thirteen thousand of our citizens will participate in one form or another of our aquatics, either the family aquatic centers or at our swimming pools. We will have close to seventy-three hundred participants in our adult athletic programs and we estimate that we will have approximately eleven thousand youth participating in our youth athletic programs this year alone. And again, our special events, we're on target to do twenty-three hundred special events for this year for our citizens. One of the things that makes us sustainable, we feel, is our outside partnerships, our community partnerships. And these numbers only reflect, well, we have a hundred and eighty community partners. Of those hundred and eighty, twenty-four percent responded to our questions. You know, how many volunteers do you have? If you pay for a contractor to do work, what is that value? And the numbers came out that we had ninety-five thousand volunteer hours and that's only twenty-four percent of the hundred and eighty responding to our request for information. So we know that it's higher than that. That twenty-four percent that reported was worth four million dollars worth of taxpayers' saved efforts, basically. We did not have to do four million dollars worth of work or the equivalent of about forty-seven, forty-eight employee man-years through the labor of the volunteers. So we're trying to expand these community partners to, again, to add to this, but we are, we have already communicated with the hundred and eighty partners, try to get their numbers in this year. They know that we're going to be looking for that and we want to make sure that we can identify that. to be looking for that. We want to make sure that we can identify that partnership to you all going forward. I think it's an important part of what we do, and we're going to take a hard look at the LFRs that wrap around these type of partnerships and make some suggestions for you all to consider. One of the things that we were asked over this year is, how do we mow? What would it take to improve our mowing rotations and things along those lines? Councilmember Greiner was very observant last year. His citizens were very vocal in communicating with us. This is a representation of what we do currently. Of the 5,000 acres that we mow, about two locations are mowed once a week. 33 locations are mowed once every two weeks. The majority of our real estate is once every three weeks or 10 times a year. And of course, we have right-aways and areas out in the outer areas of the community. Again, some of those right-aways are at the furthest reaches of our city limits where we have medials or right-away work, and you can see that we only do those three times a year. So, looking at that, go to the next slide, Jennifer. Currently, our 5,000 acres, if you add it all up, the number of rotations that we do annually for all of those 5,000 acres, we're mowing approximately 52,000 acres annually. If you add it all up, the number of rotations, currently, we're doing about 52,000 acres. If everything went to every two weeks, then we would be up around 78,000 acres annually. That's a lot of real estate, and of course, every week would take us up to 150, 155,000 acres if you think about having to do those 5,000 acres every week during our 30-week growing season.
And so, when you say every week, that number's 30 because that's what the growing season is?
That's correct. Yeah, standard growing season or mowing season is 30 weeks out of the 52 weeks of the year. It's just the phone's working. Again, changing from three weeks to one week mowing, we did this based on pretty much just strictly the park acreage, not really the right-aways, but you can see the numbers are pretty extreme. $2.5 million to go, basically, to take those 3,800 acres and add them to the 45 acres that we do weekly. It would be $2.5 million, another 22 people, and about $1 million worth of capital, new mowers, trucks to transport mowers and things along those lines. If we were to take everything from three weeks down to two weeks, again, keeping in mind that graph that we had earlier, that'd be about $707,000. Again, it's seven new bodies and still a quarter of a million dollars worth of new equipment to be able to accomplish increased rotations on the mowing. Again, going back, we work with, Catherine Wade and her staff worked with Doug Dollar and his staff. What does it take to mow, maintain 45 acres of our lands? That $45 per acre includes edging where edging is needed, weed eating where weed eating is, open mowing where open mowing. So, we got down to about a $45 per acre to maintain our lands. If the council gave us a quarter of a million dollars, what value would that be? We could mow an additional 5,555 acres annually. How does that equate? Obviously, the 555 acres that we do now 15 times a year, we could add 10 more mowings to that group to get to 25 mowings because 555 acres times 10 is the 5,500 annual acres that we can increase for $250,000. The majority of our property, again, the middle graph there, 10 times a year, we could add one and a half mowings approximately, take it from 10 mowings to 11 mowings. Again, you can see the graph from there. Go on to the next slide, Jennifer. Trying to break that down into something that we could maybe more easily relate to, the Route 66 right-away that was brought up in question is about 6.8 acres out there between War Acres and Yukon out on Route 66. Right now, we're doing it three times a year. It costs us $918. To go to 30 mowings per season, it'd be a $9,000, well, $8,200 increase. To take it a little bit further, Southern Oaks is a 23-acre park. Currently, we're doing it 10 times a year. It's $10,000. If we went to every two weeks mowing, it'd be a $15,000, and of course, going to, once a week, it'd be a $31,000 cost. So, you can see how that $45, $45 per acre adds up into the scheme of things.
Okay, so, let's stop here for a second. We're not proposing to add $2.5 million dollars in the budget to go to every week mowing in every facility. We don't think that that's going to use any of our funds out there. We have not put additional money in this year for additional mowing. If you recall, we talked about in the past that our focus this year was getting the new fire station onboard, getting 20 new police officers involved onboard, hired again this year, and then we put another $250,000 into transit for some nighttime, enhanced nighttime service, which Jason's going to talk about next. And that's kind of where we focus on our new investment. We could, if you'd like, I'd recommend we do it in a budget amendment and not necessarily modify the budget that's being proposed at this point in time. If it's a council desire, you know, we could put a couple hundred thousand dollars and enhance it. It could be done either through internal staff, us hiring some people, or it could be done through contract labor, either way to do that and bring it back. But we've got to take a look at this as a holistic picture. It's also two more police officers. It's some additional services that could be done in nighttime service, more service for transit. There's other things that can be done, and we should, if we're going to add, we should really talk about it more in the global picture as you go forward with it. So, we do have a little bit of capacity because of what I mentioned earlier, that we've got probably, if we go with our true, if we go with our 2.45% increase, that we've really probably got a couple hundred thousand dollars that we could modify our revenue projections on.
Jim, I've not heard any complaints about the lack of mowing from Ward 5, so I don't see a big concern from that perspective. And this is a serious question. You know, we have these goats up there by Lake Hefner. What's the area that they serve or?
They cover the canal area, basically, which is hard to assess, and it's really from the river at 39th Street or Old 66.
Right.
Where the canal comes through and it kind of, it goes on the west side of Wiley Post Airport, and then it kind of goes through and it kind of makes a curve up toward Lake Hefner. And the reason that, that is not, there aren't people allowed in there. It's fenced off access, and so people aren't supposed to be in that area, and it's hard to mow.
Yeah.
So, that's why we've chosen to go with that measure, but it's working pretty good.
Well, that's what I've heard, and I'm all for trying to find alternative ways to accommodate whatever needs we may have, and I think it's a great idea.
Well, the problem is, most of our parks don't have, aren't fenced in.
Right, no, no, I understand, yeah.
But we don't need feral goats in Oklahoma City?
Well, but for example, you know, the airport is limited access. Could there be a use of goats or whatever?
Yeah, I don't think the runways and the goats are probably a good mix.
Oh, no, I was just thinking you could at least fence off the run anyway. I just wanted to see what area that those goats were taken care of from an acreage standpoint.
Just to follow up on that, goats have been used in park applications throughout the country. There's a couple out of Wyoming that have made a living of moving goats into the Denver, Colorado park system. It's a matter of, the contract is set up in such a way that they're responsible for fencing off and moving the fence with their goats through park elements. It is, it has been done. The National Park Service has used goats in the South to deal with the kudzu and things along those lines as well. But it is, it is an opportunity that can be pursued.
Doug, would you mind sending me some information on that?
We'll do that.
If you have any, I don't know if the whole council's interested, but I would like to see that if possible. Thank you.
Pardon me, issue what we're facing here to me is that the way that grass grows is a response to the weather that we have. You don't necessarily know what kind of weather you're going to have. You could have, you know, really hot temperatures and a lot of rain, and in the right sequence, and your grass is going to grow twice as fast as it would in a different sequence, but that's no way to budget. I mean, we're trying to budget something consistently. We're going to hit it right one year, and we're going to miss it the next year. So, I think we can outsmart ourselves by thinking, you know, we're going to have a noticeable difference if the weather patterns, you know, don't match what we're trying to do. Ideally, we would be in a response mode to grass, but there's no way to budget a department and hire people and staff it and train it and all those things. So, you know, it's a little bit hit and miss, and you're never going to have it exactly right to hit every weather pattern that comes through. So, I just know that it looks bad when the section of Route 66 in Oklahoma City is three feet tall, and if you go to Yukon, it's mowed properly. You go over to Bethany, it's mowed properly. But that section in between...
Yeah, and same way with streets. You know, sometimes we'll have a street that's another municipality, and they'll pave their part, and we haven't gotten around to doing ours.
Yeah.
And it's a noticeable difference. I agree with you. It doesn't look good when we're not holding up our own with our neighboring municipalities.
And it's like that every, I mean, it's like that every year, every summer. So, I think that there's certain areas that get that three mows per season that need to be mowed more often.
With that in mind, we're taking a hard look at our resources, just specifically from that perspective to try to figure out.
What if we tried to adjust our mowing patterns to match what other municipalities are doing where we have these shared areas, to see if, you know, if they're mowing twice as often as we have or not, and if we could adjust those? Because, you know, I don't want to be the municipality that's holding back the beautification of a certain part of the city, especially when you're talking about Route 66. I mean, it's a highly visible street, so.
And again, we appreciate Mr. Greiner bringing it up, putting it on our radar because I did not see that last year.
Well, let's just find out what their mowing pattern is, and if it's, if we need to tweak our system or increase the budget slightly to match that. I don't think that's, I don't think that's a bad idea.
Well, like I said, we've already taken a close look at that.
Okay.
But we wanted to make sure that we had at least a presentation so that everybody knew how we're operating right now going forward.
Okay.
Some of the other, the requested budget changes that have, that are in the manager's proposed budget to y'all is adding a customer service representative out at Will Rogers. Again, our level of renting out there has exponentially gone up with the Lycan Conservatory being redone through tax dollars. We will more than pay for that part-timer going to a full-timer from the added revenues that we'll make off of that facility. The Quality Control Coordinator for the Civic Center, again, we're automizing a lot of our activities, the ticketing system that is going to be new, our Ungerbach Performance System to make sure the halls are ready. We need somebody that is skilled in electronic warfare, basically, to keep all of our systems running properly. And again, the nursery worker, the original MAPS funding is going away that paid for the maintenance staff, the nursery worker, so we're asking that the general fund pick up the cost of those employees that were being paid out of the original MAPS funding.
It was actually the use tax. It was the MAPS use tax for the original MAPS was set up for some operations back at that point in time. We're trying to wean ourselves off of that because it's a decreasing revenue source.
Okay, Jennifer. Again, this is our operating budget. Some of the projects that we've got going, the Harn Family Homestead, we're being able to do a major renovation of this particular property through cooperation with the Planning Department and CDBG Funds. The Mike Dover Park, I think if you've driven down through the south side and seen the exercise area that's undercover, but we've expanded the playground. This is a new EVO system that is up and coming. It has all of the elements that keep children active and involved and keeping their imagination going. And again, our partnerships with the Wilderness Matters folks in creating this new accessible facility out at Martin Park, our partnership with Continental on Bluff Creek, which hopefully we will have the dedication this month of. Again, this is just an absolutely marvelous addition to that area of the city. And of course, the Lincoln Park Clubhouse that just opened, had to throw in the golf commission's pride and joy at this point in time. Lovely facility. And I wanted to leave you with this particular slide. Again, this is from the Trust for Public Land. This is, they score the top 70 cities in the, in the country, or the 75 largest cities in the country, get an actual score, and we place 70th overall. And, you know, we have great assets. You all have vision, and you have created some wonderful outdoor recreational opportunities. My job is to make sure that we educate the Trust for Public Land of what we've accomplished already, what you have accomplished, what our future holds, and get this score to match what really this city is. And we should be up in the upper 10% of this, of this scoring instead of the bottom 10%. And that's my pledge to y'all is to improve our overall score by better using the dollars that you give me on an annual basis.
Let's hold that slide up there. Doug, when I've kind of looked into these numbers in previous years, I've noticed that in some cities that happen to operate schools or operate playgrounds, those cities count school playgrounds as part of their park system, part of their basketball hoops, and all of those things that go into these numbers. Of course, we don't because we don't operate the schools. So, when you add in all the playgrounds and basketball goals that are on our schools in this community, well over a couple hundred schools inside the Oklahoma City limits, these numbers would look a lot different. So, these numbers are skewed, and this organization knows that. I complain about it. They don't seem to care enough to change the metrics by which they count. They just send that questionnaires, and our Parks Department answers honestly, but it doesn't count all the recreational green spaces that are available inside the city. So, it's a very misleading statistic, but no one wants to be 70th out of 75th, so.
And the mayor is absolutely correct, but it's how they, how we report and how they judge. And as we go down this path, as I mentioned earlier, our planning staff is working with Aubrey and her staff to get these neighborhood parks created in these new developments. I've got to convince these folks that we need to count those as public space, even though the public entity may or may not be responsible for maintaining it. Again, that's my pledge to y'all is to work on what the mayor has already started with the TPL. And I've developed, over my career, I've developed very strong relationships with the top management in TPL, and I think I can make some inroads on this. But I want to make sure that you know that I take this very serious, and my goal is to prove to them what you have had the vision for over the last 20 years is reflected. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Yeah, David?
Doug, once a year at least, I think, the state offers free fishing, just to introduce fishing to, you know, the state residents. Do we coordinate with that and provide for free fishing at the local facilities?
Yeah, unfortunately, I have to report on myself. We missed that announcement coming from the state, so our city is not offering that. We're going to work with the Police Department not to be too aggressive on that day that the state has chosen, but we missed it to come to the council with that.
And I was thinking, going forward, just to kind of encourage people to utilize the city lakes, that maybe we offer additional days, maybe once a month throughout the summer, just to, again, to introduce our residents to fishing here locally, free without a permit required.
We, this year, have been working with Chief Cities folks, the lake folks, to get out and do some non-enforcement visitation with our anglers, and we found that there's an awful lot of people... an awful lot of people that do not know that they need to have a city permit to fish. So, we're working on educating the masses to that element. It's kind of a self-promoting thing. The money that we take in from those fishing permits help keep the fisheries stocking lakes, so. But that's a good point, but the more we can educate people and give something back, the better off we'll be.
Maybe when we promote the fact that this is a free fishing day, it would help educate the people that, outside of that free fishing day, you do need to have a city permit. Thank you.
Doug, if I, sorry. I just, while I have you and some of your staff here, I want to thank you for coming out last night. I really appreciate the impossibility of this public-private partnership with Red Andrews Park. I think it addresses exactly what you're talking about with the focus on neighborhood parks, along with some of these larger ones. So, I thought the response was great, and it's a wonderful plan, and I really appreciate your help.
Well, we appreciate your support on that, too.
Doug, thank you.
Thank you. Next up is transit parking, Jason Pervish.
All right, looks like we're, looks like we're ready to go. Good morning, mayor and council, and definitely pleased to be here this morning to present the FY 2016 proposed budget for the Public Transportation and Parking Department to you. I have a couple of, or a few staff, actually, that I'd like to introduce. I have Melissa Rousey, our financial services manager, with us this morning, Kevin Mulcahy, our new assistant director with us this morning, who joined us in January, and, of course, Michael Scroggins, our manager of marketing, customer relations, and technology, is helping out with the presentation. I wanted to take just a minute and just point out our title slide to you this morning. I hope you recognize it. It's a photo taken in automobile alley, looking south on Broadway. And, of course, the reason I mention that is that's one of the areas that our new night service now operates in. So, our Route 23N provides evening service until midnight up and down Broadway. So, just wanted to point that out. We're definitely excited about our night service, and have some more information in the presentation that we'll share with you. One thing, you know, I think we, as a department, recognize is that public transportation and parking services, we feel very strongly are both important to the economic well-being of our community, but also as important are really quality-of-life amenities for our residents. And in FY 15, we feel like we had a very productive year as a department, and we had several major milestones that I'd like to talk about just a little bit as we set the stage moving forward into the FY 16 budget. And so, the first milestone that you'll see there on the slide is, of course, our system enhancements. And I know we've talked about that a lot, but we essentially kicked off those system enhancements, which were recommendations from the Nelson Nygaard Transit System Analysis. We kicked those off at the very end of the FY 14 fiscal year. But the thing that's been neat about this last fiscal year is we've had those enhancements in place for the entire year. So, we've been able to continually monitor, gather data, and see what kind of impact those enhancements have had month to month. And I'll share some slides with you later that will, that will look at that in a little bit more detail, but it's been very positive. Ridership gains are there, customer feedback is there, and so we're very pleased with how the system enhancements have been accepted by our customers. Of course, then, later that year, 1st of August, we added Bike Share, the Spokys Bike Share program, to embark family of services. And, you know, we look at Bike Share as really another piece of the multimodal transit system, and we want to encourage people to think of Bike Share as a means to complete the last mile or that last leg of a transit trip. So, we're really concentrating in trying to promote that. In addition, we have brought bicycle transit systems onboard to help us manage the Spokys Bike Share program. They manage other systems across the country. We're also going through a rebranding with Spokys, so next month, we're going to unveil the new colors and kind of a fresh look. We're keeping the Spokys name, but are freshening it up a little bit, and have our first planned station expansion also coming up in July. And then, real quickly, the last thing I'll mention about Spokys is we have, we're working with the Emerson High School in part of supporting a mentorship program that they have. And some of you may have seen the article in the Gazette, but basically Emerson has developed a mentorship program where youth come in, work with an adult, and the project that the mentors and the youth work on together is bike repair. And so, of course, we have plenty of bikes for them to work on, and we're very pleased to be able to provide those to them. They won't run out of projects, but it's working very well, and we're very glad to be able to participate in that. And then, in August, later that month, we added 30-minute frequencies to Route 8. And although we received a lot of positive comments about our system enhancements, one of the things we did hear from our customers was, you know, wow, we would like to have 30-minute frequency all day on 8. And so, with some of the additional funding that was provided in this last budget year by council, we ended up adding a bus to that route. We now have 30-minute frequency all day long on Route 8. Route 8 essentially runs north out of the Transit Center, I believe, to 63rd Street, and then all the way out to Lyerwood Lane. So, 30-minute frequency on that route. And then, in November, of course, we opened up the Arch District Parking Garage, adding about 802 parking spaces to the inventory of structured parking in downtown Oklahoma City. And then, one of the last milestones we had was more bus system enhancements. We, again, taking the additional funding that was provided by city council in FY 15 fiscal year, we added frequency to Route 11. As you'll recall, Route 11 is our south-side crosstown. It's continuing to grow in popularity, ridership, and we've made that bus now 30 minutes frequency all day as well. And then, something that Oklahoma City hasn't seen in quite some time is fixed route bus service at night. And so, we launched our pilot program in January, adding evening fixed route bus service until midnight on a north-side crosstown, which we refer to as Route 23N, and then the south-side crosstown, which is Route 11. And so, again, we couldn't be more excited about the opportunity to continue implementing system enhancements. One other thing before we get into some of our strategic business planning and budget issues is I wanted to just kind of remind us of some of the feedback we receive from our citizens. And in the last citizen survey, as you will recall, transit continued to rank high when citizens were asked, what areas of city services do you think need the most emphasis? And so, again, we continue to rank high in that area, only behind the condition of city streets, the ease of travel and getting around town, and, of course, police officers. So, having provided a quick update of some accomplishments and some citizen feedback, I'd really like to kind of begin our discussion by mentioning that, as many of you are aware, our budget is basically built on our strategic business plan. And we are confident that our FY 16 budget not only promotes or supports the goals that we've identified in our strategic business plan, but also supports city council's priority to develop a transportation system that works for all citizens. Our budget begins on page C, 277, in your budget book, and in that section of the budget book, you can find our department mission statement. You'll notice there's an org chart available for you to review. We have a breakdown of expenditures and positions, along with kind of a description and a purpose statement of each one of our programs, and then, of course, the performance measures that support those. So, as we get into the budget, one of the things I'll talk about a little bit here is our department issues. And I'd like to just note that we, as a department, think of these department issues really as opportunities for us to proactively identify some of the challenges and obstacles that we're going to be looking at in the next two to five years. And so, you know, the whole process is developed around identifying those challenges, kind of developing some high-level strategies to address those challenges, and then measuring the results of those through our strategic result performance measures. And so, I'll try to spend a little bit of time talking about each of our four issues and giving you a sense of some of the strategies and the performance goals we've been able to accomplish. So, the first issue that I want to talk about is the issue of state of good repair. And, of course, this is a, this is a big issue for our department, trying to continually maintain our vehicles and our facilities, both our transit facilities as well as our parking facilities. And so, in terms of some of the strategies that we've implemented for maintaining that state of good repair, well, one is, and we've talked about this before as well, but one of the priorities we have is to continue to seek funding alternatives for bus replacement. That's a, that's a big challenge for us, and I'll go into a little bit more detail later on that. The other thing that kind of rolls into state of good repair is making sure that all of our equipment, our buses in particular, are outfitted with latest technology, and then that technology is being maintained. You know, it's amazing when you look at one of our fixed route buses today, there's high-resolution security cameras on those buses, there's electronic fare boxes, there's AVL, or Automatic Vehicle Locating Systems, on those buses. So, there's a lot more into maintaining that equipment than just, you know, making sure the chassis is maintained and rolling down the road. And so, we've done a really good job recently in being able to implement and upgrade some of our latest technology. So, one of our strategies is to continue to expand the skill set of our supervisors so that we can get the most out of that technology, in particular, the AVL system, so that we are using that to run the most dependable and most efficient bus system that we can. Couple of other things that relate to maintaining a state of good repair, of course, is we want to continue to replace outdated parking meters, and we work alongside of Public Works and as different pieces of Project 180 are completed, as you're well aware, we go back and replace the more traditional meters with the electronic multi-space meters. And then, also, we continue our capital improvement program, particularly with our parking garages, and I have a few examples I'll show you of some, some projects that we've completed recently. In terms of results for addressing the state of good repair issue, there's a lot of measures that we can come up with, but we think one of them that kind of signifies our ability to maintain a state of good repair, particularly with our vehicles, is our ability to deliver on-time performance. Now, there's a lot of things that go into on-time performance, but obviously, we have to have operable buses out on the road every day to ensure that. So, I did want to talk a little bit about our on-time performance this morning and let you know, and you'll see this in your budget book, but we are basically on pace to finish the year overall at 66% on-time. And I want to spend just a minute talking about that on-time performance, because when we met last year and looked at our budget presentation, we were reporting a 92% on-time performance. But as I've mentioned in the past, we've changed the way we're measuring that on-time performance pretty dramatically from year to year. In fact, the way we're measuring that now is we're using our AVL technology, and we're actually able to determine whether a bus hits each of the over 1,200 stops in our system, whether a bus reaches that within that six-minute window that we allow. And so, if you'll remember, a bus is considered to be on-time if it's no more than one minute early and no more than five minutes late. So, we have that six-minute window. So, although the numbers have declined, we think it is a much more accurate way, a much better representation of what our customers actually experience, and it gives us hard data to manage to. So, to give you a sense of kind of how we've progressed, when we first started emphasizing this in July, the first of the fiscal year, we were at about 60%. We have steadily improved our on-time performance, topping out in January at about 74%, 1% below our target of 75. And then, we've had a couple of months where we're in the 70, 71 percentile. So, you know, this is an area that we can continue to make improvements in, but one that we feel very strongly about in that we have a lot of confidence in our system to be able to monitor it and manage to it now. And then, in terms of reliability of our parking meters, you'll notice we have virtually no downtime with our electronic parking meters. That's not to say we don't have some problems from time to time, but usually, they're a pretty, pretty quick fix, and downtime is minimal on our, on our electronic parking meters. So, going into a little bit of detail on our aging fleet, I wanted to provide city council with kind of an update as to our funding plan for our replacement buses. If you look at our fleet right now, the fixed route buses, the large 40-foot buses you see, we have about 18 buses that are past or have reached their useful life. So, that's 31% of our fleet that is essentially ready for replacement. Now, to put that in context, of those 18, three of them are 2002 models, so they're about a year overdue. 15 of those are 2003 models, and they are just now coming due for replacement. So, in terms of our plan to begin replacing those buses, we have about $4 million accumulated from our current-year federal grant, along with prior-year grant awards, to put towards the replacement of about nine buses. That'll leave us, of course, with nine unfunded, and if things do not change in terms of federal funding, we're looking at replacing a couple of buses each year from here forward. So, it's going to take us a little while to get through that full 18. Now, one thing that we are excited about is we met as a cop at Transportation Committee last week and have decided for our new bus purchases, we are going to be looking at CNG buses. So, we are beginning the process now of basically bringing in a consultant to kind of help us do some further analysis on the cost benefits of CNG, as well as begin working on the development of a station and the budget required for that station. All right, and then, also, in the areas of state of good repair, the Santa Fe Garage, you see I have a picture of that on your slide here. We currently have a project underway at the Santa Fe Garage to replace all four of the elevators and the two towers, and I'm pleased to report that the first phase of that project, the two south elevators, are scheduled to be done in about four weeks, and then we will begin Phase 2, which could take, you know, obviously, several months. Don't have a definitive date on that yet, but nonetheless, it'll be great to have new elevators in the Santa Fe Garage. One of the other projects on the parking side of our operations that we completed this last year was some concrete rehabilitation and some weatherproofing at the Sheridan-Walker Garage. And if you'd been in that Sheridan-Walker Garage recently, before we started our project, you probably would have noticed there were several areas on the parking decks where the concrete had basically broke away, and there was some exposed rebar. We went in and we replaced all that. We also put a waterproofing membrane on the, on the top floor of the garage, and that project itself was about a $400,000 project. All right. Moving on to our next issue, our next issue really speaks to the ongoing challenge of recruiting, developing, and retaining our employees. And I know that that's an issue that probably is shared among several departments, but it is one that we feel like raises to the level where it should be one of our main department issues, something that we continue to focus our efforts on. Some of the strategies that we have in trying to maintain and develop that workforce is, one, is we want to continue with our quarterly safety training meetings. And we do this, we do many different types of training throughout the year, but we have mandatory training quarterly for all of our bus operators. We do some customer service training. We do some focused training in the areas such as, you know, wheelchair securement, ADA sensitivity. We train on driving in winter conditions, bike lane safety. You know, there's a multitude of different things that we touch on throughout the year. So, we do think that's very important in helping us continue to develop our workforce. One of the other things we do is we have developed over the last couple of years what we call retention team meetings. And, you know, for our bus operators in particular, we do have, you know, some somewhat significant turnover on occasion in the ranks of the bus operators, and we initiated this retention team process where we will, as a group, evaluate our new hires on about a 45, 65, and 85-day basis. And then, if there's any, you know, challenges or areas where we need to coach or counsel employees, we're able to bring them in during that probationary period. And although, and I'll get to our turnover here, I'll just go ahead and talk about our turnover now. Actually, although our turnover for a department as a whole, for FY 15, is projected to be about 17%, when you look into the numbers and you look at just our bus operators, we've actually decreased the turnover in our bus operator positions from about 18% the previous year to about 14.8% during this current year. So, we think, you know, amongst some other things we've been doing, but we think the retention team meetings have helped with that. And then, another strategy we have is, in order to maintain that workforce, we want to make sure employees feel like they have a safe place to work. And what we were able to accomplish within this last year was install basically an access control system- control system at our South May facility, as well as our Transit Center, enhanced security cameras, and then in addition to that, enhanced alarm monitoring. And this is also in keeping with FTA's priorities for safe and secure environments. And then as far as performance measures go, I've kind of talked about turnover already, but one of the things that we look at, you know, when we, as a, as a staff, say, you know, what's a really good indicator of a, of a, of a well-developed and trained workforce? You know, one of the things is safety. That applies to both the bus operators, our mechanics, we want to have a very safe operation. And so one of the things we look at is our accidents. And what I can share with you is that for FY15, we're essentially on pace to finish at about 2.24 accidents per 100,000 miles. So that translates to about 52 or three accidents in total, and then about 54% of that amount are what we classify as non-preventable. In other words, it was not necessarily our operator's fault. And one of our most common non-preventable accidents, of course, is one of our buses being rear-ended when they're stopped to, to pick up people. It's just unfortunately, our most common non-preventable type accident. And then on the next slide here, one of the things we do, again, in supporting and developing our workforce is we're always looking for ways to try to recognize employees. And so for the, I believe it's about the second year in a row here, we have recognized National Transit Driver Appreciation Day. And of course, you can know, you see, we call it the Bus Operator Appreciation Day, but we were able to celebrate that March 18th. And the way we did that this year is we had our administrative staff, myself included, and some of the folks I introduced you to this morning. We rode some buses, we stationed ourselves at the Transit Center, and basically, we handed out thank-you cards to our customers and asked them, you know, of course, if they were willing or wanted to, to just write a thank-you note or a word of encouragement to our bus operators. And so it was, we collected about 165 of those cards during that day, compiled them into a notebook, and, and placed them in the, in the, our South May facility for operators to, to take a look at. So it was a, I, I thought it was a very successful event, and that's something that we'll obviously continue to do in one way or another moving forward. All right, our next issue is that of sustainable growth and service development. And of course, this issue really speaks at our challenge to provide intermodal, I'm sorry, multimodal transit services, but then also to continue to try to narrow that gap between the services we're able to provide as a transit agency and the ones that are really demanded by our citizens. And so as far as the strategies go that we have towards addressing that sustainable growth is, one, we want to maximize ridership through our additional system enhancements. And I think we have, at least over the last few years, a pretty good track record of doing that. The other thing, and I've mentioned this before, but is in the presentation this morning, but that is to seek funding alternatives for timely replacement of buses. And that's kind, that's a repeat, but that, that strategy really affects two of our issues. Maintaining a state of good repair and trying to keep up with the demands of service really go back to being able to replace our buses in a timely manner. So when we look at the effectiveness of our strategies in those areas, really, the, the best way to roll that up, in our, in our opinion, is to look at our ridership. What has our ridership done, and is it an indicator that we are able to grow, and are we growing at a sustainable rate? And so I have a few slides I wanted to share with you to give you a sense of our ridership this morning. This first slide is our riders per bus service hour, and you can see the green line there is our weekday service, the orange line is our Saturday service, and we have about a five-year comparison for you to take a look at. Now, the riders per service hour won't necessarily tell you how many people are riding the bus or what we average in a typical month or day, but what it is a good measure of is efficiency, and that is how many riders are on a bus during any given service hour. And so obviously, if you think about it from a resource perspective, we use the same amount of resources to drive a bus for an hour half-full as we do totally full, and that's kind of the concept. We want to maximize those riders per service hour. Looking back at our transit system analysis that was done by Nelson Nygaard when we compared to peer cities, our peer cities came in at about 20 to 20.5 riders per service hour. So we have a little bit of work to do, but I think what, what I would like to point out from these numbers is really just drilling into the weekday service FY 2014 to FY 2015. And the reason I say that is because with the system enhancements that we implemented in 2015, we increased our revenue hours by about 8.5%. And so normally, what we would experience or expect is when you're adding that many service hours, initially, your riders per hour are going to decline. And that's because it just simply takes people a little while to get used to the new service or adjust their travel habits or maybe attract new riders. What we haven't seen is we have not seen that with this latest round of enhancements. In fact, we've actually been able to maintain our riders per service hour despite the fact that we've increased total revenue hours by about 8.5%. So I think, again, that's just a really good indicator of how well the system enhancements have been received. The next slide here is our average weekday ridership, and this will kind of help give you a sense of how many people are using the bus on a daily basis on our Monday-through-Friday service. And you can see that we've had many months this year where we've exceeded 10, 11,000 trips on a daily basis. But again, what you're seeing here is the orange line is actually our FY14 average daily ridership pre-service enhancements. The kind of blue-colored line is the FY15 average weekly ridership. And so of course, the takeaway there is that we've been able to outpace or exceed average daily ridership each month since launching our service enhancements when we compare it to the previous year. And then looking at our night shift rider ser, I'm sorry, our night shift ridership, you can see that we have about four months of data that we're able to look at here, and on our Route 23N, we started at about 1,600 passenger trips cumulatively during the month when the service was first launched, and now we're well over 2,000 cumulative passenger trips. And you can see a similar trend with Route 11, starting at 677 and finishing up the last couple of months around 1,000. Now, the one, I have noted on the slide in kind of a blue color right next to the month, the riders per service hour. And, you know, then, we only have four months of data, so it's really, you know, pretty preliminary. But I know when we were looking at this last year, one of the questions that Council had for us was, well, how are we going to know this night service is a success? And at that time, our, our reply was, and our reply still is, you know, it's a very limited service, it's only two routes, we really don't know how well it's going to be received, but if we could at least average half of the riders per service hour at night that we do during the day, we would consider that a pretty good success for our first, first year doing this with two routes. And so you can see the riders per service hour has steadily grown. We started at about 5.7 total for those two routes and finished just under eight in May. So we're almost to, to that nine target that we were actually kind of shooting for.
Is the difference in riders between the two routes similar for the daytime also? Because, I mean, the 23N is more than double.
Yeah, it's going to be similar for the daytime. 23 and, and actually five, which I'll talk about in a little bit, are two most productive routes. And so, yeah, when you look at the daytime numbers, 23 is about half of what 11 is.
Okay.
Yep. All right. And so our last issue that we'll talk about is our community relations issue. And this, this issue is really our challenge to continue to understand what our community's expectations are, the changes in those expectations, and try to make sure we have or provide the best overall customer service or customer experience. And so looking at our strategies for addressing our community relations issue, we definitely want to continue to improve customer satisfaction through enhanced amenities. That could be technology, that could be bus shelters, there's lots of different amenities that we can add to the transit system. We want to maintain clean vehicles and facilities, that's, I just, that's very important, particularly with people that are, we're trying to get to try transit for the first time, we want to have that good first impression. And we want to partner with community organizations and continue to support business development. So some of the results that we look at are customer satisfaction measures, and we were fortunate enough last summer to be able to partner with the Planning Department and with OU Health Sciences Center, and they brought a project to us and said, you know, we want to survey, embark ridership and determine what are the impacts or what, what is the opinion of, of the riders since implementing the service changes. And so again, we do appreciate the Planning Department really kind of taking the lead on this and helping us with this project. And I have just a few of the survey questions that I'll share with you this morning. So initially, we asked them, you know, what is your overall impression of the route changes? And you can see that about 52% of the respondents indicated that the route changes were better, about 16% the same, and 20% indicated that they did not like the route changes as well as our previous arrangement. When asked, though, about better access to grocery stores, you can see about 63% of our riders responded saying, yes, they do have better access. 25% said not applicable, so maybe they don't use transit for the, for the grocery store, and then 12% indicated no. When we asked about access to better, or better access to healthcare facilities, 55% indicated, of course, that the route changes did improve their access to health facilities, 32% not applicable, 13% no. And then this one here, when we asked about the cleanliness of buses, 75% of the customers agreed that yes, the buses are clean, which again, is very important to us. And then one of the other things I wanted to talk a little bit about in the, in the, as far as amenities go, is provide you a quick update with the status of our bus shelter project. We've talked a lot about some of our technology and so forth in the past, but haven't had an opportunity to really update Council on our bus shelters. And so what you have before you here is a map of all of the proposed bus shelters. There's about 45 shelters that have either been completed as part of the original 31 that we've, we've discussed a few different times. We have about 15 that are in progress. The PO issued means that we have the funding secured, and we're basically waiting on the contractor to start pouring the sidewalk or pouring the concrete pad, so they're all in process. And then we have actually 16 additional shelters proposed, and those will be, we expect this map hopefully to be completed over the next 12 to 18 months. So to kind of put that in perspective, we had, before we started this shelter project, we had about 75 shelters in our bus system. We're adding another 45, so we're increasing the total number of shelters by about 60%. And, and I would say, this is our 12 to 18-month kind of plan, we don't intend to just stop when we get all these done either, but this is, would give you an idea of what's going to be coming in the next year or so. The other thing I'll point out is, here's a picture in the bottom right of the presentation of a shelter that we installed near Penn Square Mall, right in front of the Cheesecake Factory there. And I'll just remind everyone that all of our shelters now are of this design, they're the three-sided, they have the trash receptacle, they have the, the large concrete pad, and they're all ADA compliant. We're not installing eight shelters that obviously are not ADA compliant. And then one other thing in the, in the, to talk about in terms of community relations is the Arch District Garage. I mentioned we had opened that in 2014, adding additional parking spaces, and the effect that those parking spaces had on our occupancy is reflected in this next slide. We finished FY14 at about 119% occupancy, added 800 spaces, and we're now at 110. And in talking with Debbie Holtclaw, our parking manager, this morning, we are actively working on our waiting list for the Arch District Garage. So continue to be demands at this time for parking in downtown Oklahoma City.
What is our next parking garage to be completed?
Well, we don't have plans for a next, for one right now. We're looking at the Convention Center as a potential parking garage.
So COPPA doesn't, but there are private sector parking garages under construction and rehab.
Yes, yes, there are, there are actually two coming.
I see, and so that doesn't go into these numbers?
No, that's exactly right. This is just public parking.
Okay.
But you have a parking study that's being done?
That's right.
That's what we're working on at this point in time.
Okay.
So on the 802 spaces, there's a waiting list, is that what you're saying?
Yes, that is right.
All right, and then as far as Santa Fe is concerned, what are we spending on the four elevators? I know, I see all the events and the Thunder Games, and those elevators get a lot of usage.
Yeah, the, that elevator project is about a million-dollar project to replace those four elevators.
Thank you.
Jason, while we're asking questions about numbers, do you know what the monthly cost is of the night service?
The monthly cost, I'll get it for you.
Could you get that for me? I'd just be curious. Yeah, I figured.
Do some math and figure that out based on hours and, and the budget.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Jason, thank you. Could, Mayor, may I just make a couple of comments?
Yeah, sure.
My observations, Jason, is that the buses are very clean, when I've never experienced a problem. You can notice the difference between a bus that's on its final year of service and, and the newer ones, so I hope we can continue to improve those. The drivers, I've found, are always very nice to me and to all the riders, so it's, it's a great experience. Now, when you talked about when you start your presentation, you said here are what, here are some items that the public wants to see, such as ease of travel, you know, improved police and all that.
Right.
All of that could be accomplished with greater use of the public transportation system. And I just like every opportunity to share these numbers. Again, if half, well, the focus should be on encouraging people who don't have to use public transportation to use it. And you can drive from your home to your nearest bus stop, park, and take the bus on end. If half of the people who work downtown rode the bus, oh, and you didn't tell us your budget for next year.
Yeah, I'm just about to get to it.
Oh, I think I interrupted Jason and gave you the impression he was done. Well, let me just throw this out since I'm talking. If half the people who work downtown rode the bus, that would generate $15 million. And so see what your budget would do if you had a, over, you know, a $15 million increase to it. You could put in all sorts of bus shelters, increase the usage and the coverage of our bus system with that additional $15 million. Plus, it's going to lower the demand for downtown parking. You know, I know we kind of like to have 110% occupancy on our parking garage, garages, but it would serve so many purposes. It would eliminate or improve parking opportunities downtown, ease travel, taking 20,000 cars off the street, and reduce the demand for police officers by reduced traffic. So I'm just saying again, and will always try to say it, if we can convince people who don't have to use the public transportation system to at least try it and then become, you know, a regular user, it would serve so many purposes and, and provide so many benefits. Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, so looking at the budget, and I'll run through these slides quickly, our combined operating budget for the department, which includes transit, parking, river, bike share, $38.7 million in total. And obviously, you can see there that the majority of that is to support transit operations at 75%. Also, I do need to point out that the numbers that are on this slide here are different than the ones in your budget book, because what we have here is a combined budget of the city and the trust, and we typically always present the budget in this fashion, but again, just as a reminder. Our transit funding sources, our total budget for transit is about $29.5 million. As you can see, the majority of our operations are supported by the city's general fund at 59%. 25% of our operations through federal grants, our formula grant, state about a million, fares at 11% of our budget are about $3.2 million, and then we have some other revenue sources of around a half a million. This next slide will just give you a sense of what the change has been in our federal, in our funding sources, and really, again, the And really, again, the takeaway here is the federal amount has been relatively stagnant. All of the enhancements that we've been able to accomplish over the last few years have come, really, additional city contributions to transit.
And we should, we should note the small amount that we get from the state there, which is much, much different than what most states provide for public transit.
That's absolutely right. And it too, as you can see, has been stagnant at about a million dollars. Parking, funding sources, our parking budget in total is about $8.2 million. You can see that daily transit parkers make up just under a million at about 12% of our budget. Event parking is a large revenue source for us at $1,007,000, or about 21% of our budget. And then, of course, our monthly parkers provide a majority of the revenue for the system at about $5.5 million, or 66% of our budget. Terms of highlighted budget changes, we have $320...
Jason, I just want to point out, there is no general fund dollars involved in the parking system. Just want to point that out.
In terms of highlighted budget changes, we do have $328,000 in our budget to support the ongoing efforts of the regional transit dialogues. We're certainly making some progress in working with ACOG to further the regional transit authority. I know the mayor and council have been very supportive of that. Our night service expansion?
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
What's the timeline on the regional transit authority? Can you quickly walk us through that process?
Well, I think, you know, the quick answer is it's still being developed. But I think the big, you know, the big, the big step is really going to be taken next year with kind of the development of that organization, whatever it's going to look like, and some funds to, you know, be able to enable that organization to start looking at options for regional transit, doing a system plan, and those kinds of things.
All right, thank you.
Okay. On the night service expansion, I'll talk about that in a minute. We have about $250,000 in additional budget to expand our night service. We had the budget transfer associated with the bike share, now that it is part of our family of services. We're adding a system support specialist position, which is an IT position. And that position will help us maintain and support all the technology that I have mentioned. And then, we were able to reduce our fuel budget by just under $500,000 due to the decline in diesel prices. And then, the next slide here will give you an idea of the next enhancements we're going to make with our evening bus service. We're going to expand Route 5, which is a north-side route, starting at the Transit Center. You can see making its way up Classen and Western, serving the Quail Springs Mall and Mercy Hospital. As I mentioned earlier, this is actually neck and neck, every month, 23 and 5 are top two performing routes. You can see, on average, we provide about 1,100 passenger trips per day, Monday through Friday, on this route. So, we will extend this route to providing service until midnight. And with our other routes, we'll have one-hour frequency from, you know, roughly 7:00 to midnight as compared to 30 minutes during the day. The next route we have recommended for further enhancements is Route 13. And this is a south-side route. Again, as you can see, starting at the Transit Center, running south on Western, serving the Oklahoma City Community College there over to the west. And so, not only have we added a link stop to the Community College, but now the Community College will have fixed route buses running until midnight. And then, you can see over east to Santa Fe, where there's a large Walmart over in that area. Route 13 averages about 525 passenger trips on a, on a daily basis, currently operating at 30 minutes. And again, this route, we will extend to run until midnight with one-hour frequencies during the evening. And then, this next map here will just give you kind of a sense of what our total, or what our overall system map for night service will look like. We have the 23 and 11 that are the east and west routes. We have the 5 and the 13 that are the north and south routes. And then, what I want to point out is you can see the little chain link type symbol on this map. Those are our designated stops for our link bus service. So, you can see there's connections that can be made between fixed route and that link service for probably a better coverage area in that, in that shaded area of our city than we've, than we've really ever had, at least in the, in the recent past during the evening. And then, with that, the last slide I have is a quote from one of our riders, or I should say, one of our customers, actually, that uses our night service. And you can see that here, but this individual says, "Working the night shift at Chesapeake Arena used to mean walking nearly five miles before I even started my workday. Exhausted before I even started to work. Now that the bus runs later, I have time and energy to get food, run errands, so I can relax when I get home." And so, I think, you know, we captured this quote. We were able to get several quotes from some of our customers using the night service. But again, we are very pleased and thankful for the opportunity to leverage the funding that council provided in FY15 to be able to provide this service in the evening and help people get to and from work and wherever else they need to go during that time. So, with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions you have.
All right. More questions?
I just have two quick questions. With regard to bus replacement, have we looked at what other cities are doing in terms of best practices and...
Well, you know, again, it's, it's, we have. And it's kind of across the board. You know, again, a lot of cities have a dedicated transit funding. A lot of cities get more support from the state. In fact, there are cities out there that don't even rely on the federal funding for their bus replacement because they have other funding sources. So, there's a lot of different approaches out there, but right now, you know, we're really working within the confines of what we can, what we can do from the federal side.
Great. And then, just a big thank you to the mayor and the manager for the RTA funding. I think Norman passed their budget last night, including the funding. And I know lots of the smaller cities are doing the same. And so, it's really a giant, giant step forward in being able to look at a much bigger system. Thanks very much.
If we're not going to be involved, it's not going to make it. So, Oklahoma City obviously has to be a major player in this.
And I also share Councilwoman Salya's view for us, the regional transit system, because I think if we really, truly try to maintain of being a big league city, we must have big league transportation. So, I think it is a step in the right direction. So, thank you, Mr. Manager. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for making sure that the city is a part of the discussions, because without Oklahoma City, there is not a true regional transit system. So, thank you all for your leadership.
I'd like to emphasize the importance of extending the night service on, is it Route 13 that goes to the Community College?
Yes.
You know, with their program of providing free college to all Oklahoma City and Western Heights School District graduates, there's no reason for anybody who wants to progress and obtain education beyond the high school level to have access to college. And, and those two-year degrees will get them in jobs where they're paying $50,000 and $60,000 to begin with. So, it's a great opportunity for individuals who are in a difficult situation to improve themselves if they're just willing to work at it. Final comment, just to indicate that I'm a advocate for transit throughout the city. I think it's Route 5. What's the earliest that somebody could begin talking to embark about getting a bus shelter put on Classen, just north, no, I'm sorry, just south of 23rd Street? There's a Walgreens.
Okay.
And a lot of people congregate there and use the bus service. And a shelter at that location would be very helpful.
Thank you. David from Ward 6.
Yes. Yeah, and I noticed Ward, I mean, Route 16 that I use, there's no shelters in plan, but maybe that could change.
Well, we have to prioritize somewhere.
Yeah, no, no. I'd say the one on 23rd and Classen certainly needs, needs one.
Yeah, we will, yeah, we'll put that on our list immediately and, and begin looking at it. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Jason.
And our final budget presentation of the morning is from the Planning Department, Aubrey Hamontry.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm excited to be here to talk about the Planning Department. This is not a very intensive budget year for us, thankfully, but we've had a lot of change over the last year. I'd like to highlight some of the programs, initiatives, and projects that we've been working on. First, I'd like to start with the mission of the Planning Department, to provide comprehensive community planning and economic development services to current and future Oklahoma City residents and businesses, so they can live and work in a vibrant, sustainable community. I think that all departments work toward this mission. Wanted to quickly highlight the structure of our department. We have about 50 employees. I think that now in the department than I've ever seen before, we have better diversity. We have the most talented professional staff, I think, that the city has seen in its Planning Department to date. And I've heard from so many people as I've gone around, working with people in our business community and outside of it, that they look at our city's staff, it's not just the Planning Department, but the city's staff, and they relate it to some of the best consultancies and Fortune 500 companies that they've seen. So, this has been definitely my experience working in the department over the last year with these wonderful professionals. We have four divisions that we're split into. The Administration Division, the Planning and Redevelopment Division, Current Planning and Urban Design, and Housing and Community Development. These divisions are organized because the Planning Department deals with things from creating the city's long-range vision. We do master planning, strategic planning. We do nuts and bolts, development review and implementation, and then all the way on the ground, working with people in the community. And these divisions are organized in such a way that we can effectively do that. I would like to introduce some of the key players in our department. Ian Colgan is here, our Assistant Director. I think you all know him. You might want to, oh, there you go. The Administration Division houses our grants administration function, which we, which we manage over 70 grants in the Planning Department. And Steve Rose is in charge of that function. We also have the Office of Arts and Cultural Affairs, headed up by Robbie Kenzel. And new to our department this year, we're going to be integrating the Office of Sustainability. You all know T.L. Bowman, who's been leading that. The Planning and Redevelopment Division has a fairly new division head that you all probably will get to know. He's, his name is Dennis Blind. Dennis is leaving, leading our new bicycle pedestrian master plan that we're just now kicking off. And Current Planning and Urban Design Division is led by Lisa Cronister. And Housing and Community Development is Chris Fargat. So, you can see how the different functions of the Planning Department fit within these divisions. I wanted to highlight a reorganization that we've been undergoing over the last year in the way that the department operates. We did do an adjustment of moving functions together, so that our long-range transportation, economic development functions are housed together. We pulled apart some of the things that were Current Planning and Urban Design from that to create its own division, so it can really focus on urban design, design review, development review functions together. Overall, I think the most significant change that we've made is our approach to planning in that instead of having a project assigned to one person that works in a division primarily under a division manager, is that it's a more collaborative type of work environment. We're structuring our projects around project-based teams. The teams pull in staff from the different divisions of the Planning Department to assist with that, so we can get a full spectrum of perspectives on a project and pull all the talent and resources that we have together. So, I think we've created a very collaborative, advantageous type of working environment that's similar to how private corporations will structure project teams. As for our budget, this year, I would like to describe a little bit how our budget is appropriated between general fund dollars and federal dollars. Our general fund budget is about $3.9 million. We were required to take a 1% cut. We were able to achieve that through cutting some of our professional services, office supplies, furniture, and fixtures. Those were things that we were able to do without any type of programmatic or operational impacts to the Planning Department. One thing that you might see different in the budget this year is because we were able to absorb the Office of Sustainability, we've been able to transfer that budget into our budget. One of the things of note is that the federal program budget for the Planning Department is about $28.8 million. This consists of all of our entitlement grants, our competitive grants, and now our disaster recovery grant funds. And that's a big portion. I just put this graph up here to show you that, over time, these federal program grants have been declining. So, we are trying to address issues in the community with fewer resources each year. This graph shows how that's broken down in terms of our entitlement grants. These are the grants that we get each year that HUD allocates to us based on their formula, their allocation formula. This graph shows a five-year span, so that you can see that each year, our largest programs, which is our Community Development Block Grant Program and Home Program, do see a reduction in the amount of funding. Over time, this has accumulated, accumulated to some significant impacts to those programs. Smaller programs that we have, for example, the ESG, which is the Emergency Solutions Grant, which deals with the homeless and prevention of homelessness, have seen a bump. So, the appropriation of federal funds, although it's not holistically declining, the, the largest portions of what we do in community development has seen a steady decrease. This past year, Community Development Block Grant Funds did just decrease 1.1%. And that's our most flexible source of funding to do community development programs. The Home Program, which is the Home Improvement Partnership Program, which deals with affordable housing, took the most significant cut this year, went down about 9%. I'd like to walk you through some of our issues. As we report on our budget, we like to talk about our strategic business plan structure, highlighting the issues that are going to face us and strategies to approach that, and maybe touch on a few accomplishments that we've had over the last year towards these issues. First one being about community development and understanding that every community, all cities, have the issues of poverty, homelessness, affordable housing, things that impact perceptions of public safety in our community. Public health is a very real concern. Our ability to meet demands with public services, it affects economic development, and it affects our education outcomes. So, it's a very serious issue. The strategies that we approach this with utilize those federal grant sources through all of our federal programs. Some of the strategies for us to tackle this are concentrating those resources in targeted revitalization areas in Oklahoma City. We are also always looking to expand our tools and funding for affordable housing options. We're really starting to focus on stabilizing some of our at-risk neighborhoods. We now have our Strong Neighborhoods Initiative Program that is looking at three neighborhoods specifically and really trying to focus efforts in those areas. And one of our measures that we try to gauge is that our homeless remain in permanent supportive housing for more than six months. So, through these different community development programs, we're able to really drill down on those strategies and try to make some progress with that. This last year, I'd like to highlight some of the accomplishments we've made through that, in that we've completed some pretty major significant studies. Every five years, we do our consolidated plan, which outlines out how we spend those community development block grant resources. We've also completed our annual CAPER report, which is the Performance Evaluation Report. We were able to do an Impediments to Fair Housing Choice Study and a point-in-time count for the homeless population. These are great tools that guide us in efficient expenditures of our community development funds and really help us to target in on areas of need. The last part of this slide shows all of the things we were able to fund and assist with in accomplishing to our low and moderate-income areas of Oklahoma City in providing funding or assistance for 27 new homes that have been built, 25 whole-house remodels, 35 home exterior maintenance projects, 100 emergency home repairs, 250 environmental reviews, 10 to 12 storm damage relief projects underway, and 57 storm shelters and counting. Our next issue is about urban revitalization, focusing on how the city has grown over the last several decades and looking at, as our city has grown, that the inner city or the inner loop has lagged behind, and it's left it vulnerable and some areas in decline. So, the Planning Department really targets some strategy and effort in helping to boost that up. We are looking to influence revitalization of these areas in the Planning Department through increasing business and residential activities and property values in our downtown area, strengthening aging commercial districts, concentrating neighborhood revitalization efforts, targeting our brownfield resources for redevelopment projects, and enhancing our city's design standards in downtown and in other areas. We do this through several different programs and means highlighted on the right, through our overall comprehensive plan for the city, many strategies and many focused efforts outlined in that plan. In addition, we will be coming forward with the Downtown Development Framework, which is also a more concentrated look at how to revitalize downtown in terms of land uses and future development. We also have our Commercial District Revitalization Program, which manages and strengthens those commercial districts in the inner city, and the Strong Neighborhoods Initiative, which I mentioned before. I mentioned before. And I would like to highlight a few things that we do measure to give you a sense of where we are going with this. Development within the inner loop, I believe that this is a measure we report out to Council for one of your Council priorities. As you can see by this graph, which goes back about fifteen years, is that we are a volatile market, I don't know if volatile is quite the right, we're a fluctuating market in terms of development and redevelopment. However, over time, you can see that that trend is increasing. So this is a really good indicator that people are investing in and rebuilding and revitalizing our inner core. Our annual target for this measure is twenty percent growth. In 2014, it was fifteen percent, and I think that that showed a little bit of a lag from the recession. However, in 2015, you can see that it spiked back up to twenty-three percent, and I think we're on target this year to reach about twenty-three percent as well. We're also trying to measure the rate of growth in property values in our downtown Business Improvement District. Our target for that is a six percent increase. Last, 2013, the actual was seven point nine percent, which is doing much better than what we anticipated. And because of some significant investment in our downtown area, Devon, The Level, Sandridge, fiscal year 2014, the actual was actually seventeen percent. And I'm not sure that we're going to see something that high peak again, but it's a very healthy indicator that our downtown is doing great. This next year, we're going to be measuring sales tax revenues in those Commercial District Revitalization Program areas, so we'll be able to report that out to you in future strategic business plan cycles. Some of our accomplishments toward urban revitalization is that we have completed several key plans and studies, really trying to focus in on specific areas. One being looking at Park Avenue in terms of retail, how much retail Park Avenue could be supporting and will be supporting in the future. Looking at our Uptown Twenty-Third area, looking at the framework in terms of how businesses are revitalizing and functioning and how the infrastructure can help assist with that. Looking at the Plaza District, as it's become successful, has seen some challenges in terms of where people can park. We like it when we have good problems like that, and they're solvable problems. The sale, also looking at accessibility and walkability in that thriving district. Looking at ways that we can help revitalize the Penn Square area, and we are supporting efforts in what we've branded as the Northeast Renaissance. An example of one of those strategies that we have to target brownfields resources could be the steel yard development in East Bricktown. We're able to use some of our community development funding and brownfields funding to leverage that. It's a thirty-five million dollar mixed-use development. So those are real positive things that we've been able to contribute towards. We're also reinitiating some redevelopment along Northwest Tenth Street corridors. We'd like to see that Tenth Street, Western Tenth Street frontage really start to create a good combination of mixed use in residential and commercial services. This slide outlines additional accomplishments that get toward the strengthening Commercial District and strengthening Neighborhoods Strategy that I outlined before. We do provide, or did provide, support for nine Commercial District revitalization areas last year. This is growing. We get demands for new districts to be formed, and districts that we've had, been working with over time, are now starting to be self-supportive and fading onto their own, on their own two legs. We've also provided some support for four Business Improvement Districts, and the three Strong Neighborhoods areas that we're working in are all located in northeast Oklahoma City, Klassen Tenpen, Klassens North Highland Park, and Culbertson's East Highland. And getting toward the strategy for enhancing design standards, our Urban Design Division has been hard at work. We have established the city's first preservation easement for the Skirvin Hotel. This is a great tool that doesn't rely on zoning, historic preservation zoning, to provide protection on these assets and resources. It's another type of preservation tool that's now in our toolkit. HP Commission and Mayor and Council have also seen eight National Register nominations come forward. We've been working on amendments for criteria to consider demolition in our Design Review Districts, and our Design Review staff supports six different Design Review Committees and Commissions, and last year had a very busy year. Five hundred and twenty-five cases is how many they've processed. That is a very healthy indicator that people are investing in our urban areas and going through a pretty stringent process of design review, so the quality of those developments is ensured to be high. Our last issue is about sustainable growth. This is a citywide issue. It really goes back to growing our city in a way that we can provide the highest level of services to our citizens and the highest quality of life. We want to make sure that it is a balanced approach to growth, that it balances economic growth, environmental health, socioeconomic conditions, and financial considerations. We know that if we grow well, we will have a better ability to provide public services. Public health has positive outcomes, positive educational outcomes. Our natural resources are protected. Community services and employment is boosted, and economic development activities are increased as our city grows in a sustainable way. Some of the strategies to ensure that future development is more sustainable is some strategies for developing and implementing impact fees to help offset some of the costs that the city bears through its general obligation bond in keeping up with and managing the growth that is occurring. We'd like to see an increased mixed-market housing development model as redevelopment happens around the city, that inner-city development and redevelopment is thriving. We do that through incentives, development incentives, and through the coordination with other city departments and agencies and developers. We also would like to focus on putting vacant and abandoned buildings back into productive use. That's one of the keys of revitalizing the inner core, is utilizing those structures that have already been built but may have fallen into disrepair. And modifying our development codes and guidelines to make sure that we are doing more effective types of new construction and redevelopment moving forward. Some of the accomplishments that we've had over the last year, I know that you will be hearing about the Citywide Comprehensive Plan this month. It's been a multi-year effort. I think it's going to be a great way to guide and direct the entire community towards a sustainable community. That is pending adoption. I think that Council hears it on the twenty-third of this month, and Planning Commission is expected to adopt it this Thursday. We also have convened focus groups to talk about the impact fees this last year. We have a non-residential and a residential group, so we can get a balanced perspective on what people are willing to support and contribute in terms of impact fees. We've established our Disaster Recovery Grants and Programs. They're in full force, working on trying to help out the areas of Oklahoma City that have suffered, and working in coordination with the city of more in providing some services to them through a joint contract. We've also convened the Abandoned Buildings Coalition. This is in an effort to supplement the city's abandoned building ordinance and expand beyond that in looking at different tools we can do and working with public-private partnerships to address that issue. And we're also going to do annual Design Review Commission and Committee Training Workshops to make sure that everybody who contributes to that process is fully informed about what our goals and procedures and processes are and really get focused in on being as effective as we can possibly be. For next year, our expectations, we're really excited about all of the great accomplishments that we're able to report this year, but next year is also going to be an equally, I think, productive year for our staff. As I mentioned, Plano KC is coming to you, that should just say in June this year. Development Impact Fees, we hope to get to Council this year. Hopefully, in the next few months, we'll get you something that you can look at and respond to. I mentioned the Downtown Design Framework, which is another great product that we've been trying and preparing to do for several years now and have great feedback and support from our downtown business community. Public Art Master Plan will be coming to you. Sustainability Plan is kicking back up this year. I mentioned Dennis Blind convening the Bicycle Pedestrian Master Plan, the city's first to look at bicycle and pedestrian access across the entire city. Looking at the demolition criteria within design districts, we'll have several ordinance amendments to strengthen our design ordinances, and developing a complete streets policy and a downtown street design manual. I also just learned in the last week that we'll probably be collaborating with some other departments. Aqua and Utilities are doing a study around Lake Hefner to look at recreational uses and the ability to support uses around Lake Hefner. And Parks Department would like to update the Trails Master Plan for the city. So as the mayor likes to say, this really feels like we're all pulling on the same rope, and that all of our city departments are working together to create focus and plans, and I think that it's a great testament that, in our previous budget discussions, we've all been mentioning working with each other. And the interdepartmental and interdivisional collaboration, I think, of the city has been something that I've really, really enjoyed getting to take part in.
That's a great list of intentions.
Expectations for 2016.
I wish you the best.
So as I mentioned, not a lot of major, significant budget things to report, but I think that the department itself has a lot going on, and I'm happy to share that with you and be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. All right, looks like you're clear.
This concludes our presentations for this morning. We do have public input, but if we are anticipating putting this on the Council for Agenda for Adoption next week.
I'm just real enthused, you know, we're doing a lot of things. And, you know, it's a strong private sector, strong marketplace, just makes a lot of things possible, and I think you're seeing that on all fronts. Every department is doing something that I would consider fairly aggressive and something you wouldn't even consider in a, you know, in a down market. So I like the idea that we're taking advantage of the times, investing in a lot of capital resources down the line, keeping mindful eye on operation costs going forward. I just, I'm very pleased at the responsible tact we're taking as we continue to grow the city's budget and continue to grow our responsibilities. So thanks for all of that.
Mayor, if I could just follow on to that, the comments that Aubrey made about interdepartmental cooperation is so evident. I think as we have meetings with citizens, virtually everyone I have involves more than one department, and you can just see the elevation of focus and cooperation. It really makes a difference when people are talking to each other across disciplines. It is allowing us, I think, to raise the bar on so many of the projects we're working on.
I agree. It's a big year. Anything else, Jim, on this? We're going to have an opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone here from the public who would like to comment on what they've just heard as far as the Finance Committee? All right, well, adjourn the Finance Committee. We convene the Council meeting with items from Council. James, do you have anything for us?
Yeah, since we haven't talked enough about mowing today, I had one other comment about the whole mowing deal, is that I think that a good solution would be to contract out some of that, because it is hard to predict weather, and I'm thinking similarly to how we do the ice removal, you know, that we can cull them whenever we need them. Like, for right now, we have twenty-one days straight of mowing. It's going to be hard for our staff to catch up since we're, since everything's so wet. It would be nice to have some other people on call that we could, that we could go out and, so we could keep up.
We'll take a look at that, see what we can do, and I don't mean to be negative, but one of the problems is, is that when we're struggling to keep up with our cities, that's when they're also struggling to keep up with the private contract. We will look into that.
I think matching the mowing patterns of the other municipalities, though, that we have to, you know, the general public doesn't want to figure out whose job it is to mow. I think that might be worth looking at, how easy it is to implement. Easy for me to say.
We'll be happy to look at that.
Larry? Okay. David?
Thank you, Your Honor. Jim, just a question for you. Could you give us a status of where we are as far as repairing potholes? I know right after the rainy season that took place, we were, you know, seven or so days to get to a report on a pothole, and it's my understanding that that's decreased where we're close to, I don't know, three days?
Yeah, no, it's come down, but the fact of the matter is, we're only a couple of weeks outside of some significant rainfall events, and so, you know, our raw number of potholes coming in are still pretty substantial, but the lag time is going down.
Yeah, we are making progress towards them. There's just a lot to take care of. Thank you.
Meg?
Just a couple of things. I guess I really want to thank the collaborative group called The Voice, a group of churches, that inner-city churches come together that talk about issues. I met with them last week, and they were really focused on the issues of panhandling slash separate from our work and response with the homeless community. And I just wanted everybody in the Council to know that we're really going to reactivate the conversation that we've had about creating some public service awareness and some announcements and things about panhandling issues, and hopefully encouraging people to work with the agencies that provide support rather than perhaps just getting out of your car window. So that effort is going to enliven itself once again. A couple of neighborhood meetings, Gatewood and Lenwood, and I just so appreciate their proactive focus on development, as we're seeing all this inner-city development beginning to happen, and we see these commercial revitalization districts beginning to move out of their sort of defined boundaries into residential neighborhoods again. These neighborhoods are really active in responding to that, very supportive, but also focused on, you know, their own concerns, which is really important, and I appreciate that. We've got a really busy week in Oklahoma City. This is the fifteenth year for Dead Center Film Festival. It kicks off tomorrow with a big event at the Native American Cultural Center, and then runs all weekend. I think there's screening a hundred and twenty films in four or five in East Downtown. It should be really exciting, and it's the Pre-2 West Show at the National Cowboy Museum, so I encourage everybody to go out Saturday night and buy some art. It's good for sales tax revenues. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last week was the Women's College World Series Championship, and it was definitely great to see the Softball Hall of Fame packed. It's one thing to sit through a presentation, to hear about what's happening at the Softball Hall of Fame, but there's a, when you're actually there, and to see how the Softball Hall of Fame handles those different type of tournaments and series, it was, to me, outstanding. And to see people coming in from out of state to watch the series, even though they may not have been connected to Michigan or Florida, but it was definitely great to see people from out of state coming in to Oklahoma City to watch softball. So my hat goes off to Craig and his staff at the Softball Hall of Fame.
Especially, Jim, I wanted to thank you and your staff. This is the first time I've been through this process, and I thought the budget overview was most informative. You have a great staff. Everybody's cooperative, creative, and they work well together, and I was most impressed. Thank you.
Thank you.
City Manager reports.
We just have a follow-up from earlier Finance Committee meetings where we answered some questions brought up by the Council, and we'd be happy to provide further information if so required.
Yeah, I thought it was all good. Good questions and good answers. I hope everybody got a chance to look at it. If not, I urge you to. Citizens to be heard? All right, ready to adjourn? Where to adjourn?